God, we give you thanks for the blessings of another day. May we always be mindful that every good and perfect gift comes from your gracious hand. We thank you for this council and their service to our city. We ask for your wisdom to be upon them as they deliberate the business at hand. May all of us be mindful of our responsibility to serve with pure and sincere hearts. For those in power, may they be mindful of the weak. For those with a voice, may they be mindful of the voiceless. For those with influence, may they be mindful of the vulnerable. May our hearts and minds seek what is pure, what is honorable, what is true, what is noble, and what is right. May our hope and trust ever be in you and you alone. Hear our prayer in the name of Christ. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On behalf of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Two, consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I vote to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. That motion, Councilman Brown, second, Councilman Spiegel, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries, agenda item 3A, public hearings on finish and use permit for warehouse being self-sourced in commercial districts. Ms. Box.
Good evening, council. As you see, this request is for a condition use permit for property already zoned commercial. App point would like to add a new warehouse component to their existing retail business. This is at 4527 Texan Road Parkway. As you can see, there's some aerial shots. You can kind of see the hot air balloon here marking the property. It's existing retail at the front. The proposal currently is to add, I believe, a driveway on the north end of the property and build one U-shaped building and then two interior storage buildings. This is from the existing frontage. Both a retail store and a truck rental store. This is the site plan they concluded. Now, they have not gone through an actual site plan process. It would be staff approval for the site plan. They would also need to replant the property in order to construct their proposed buildings. That replant would go through planning zone commission for approval. But in that, that site plan would be staff approval. They would have to meet all landscaping requirements, all building material requirements, et cetera. It would need to be adequately screened. There is residential property, both existing and zoned residential property, both to the north, the west, and the south. So it would be required solid screening walls on all three of those sides to basically screen the buildings for view of that adjacent residential property. With that, staff does recommend approval of this item. We'll stand for any questions. Planning zone commission also recommend approval.
Okay, this is a public carry. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this agenda item? Name an address, please, for the record. Name an address, please, for the record.
Kent Sanders, 2721 Roman Road, Sherman. It's my property. I have the, I have a military surplus store and I took on a U-Haul business, a little extra. And we decided to do something with the back of the property, besides moat, every week. It's pretty much all I could come up with, was storage buildings. We're kind of excited about it, bringing some business into the city. It's, and everybody's full. Storage is are just, I mean, with the U-Haul, I see people, they're just, they're hunkering their storage. Everybody's full of. And I think it'd be a good thing. Yeah, everything will be met through the city. Whatever requirements are made, we'll, we'll go back.
Are you familiar with what the building materials are going to be required there on the actual construction materials?
For the buildings themselves, it'd be metal.
Right. State is that?
I'd have to check the code. I'm not sure off the top of my head if that'd be allowed. Now, the thing with re-ruored storage buildings is probably eighty, eighty-five percent of the buildings actually door. So no matter what the material of the building is, you're actually not, there's not much of that material required. If it's masonry, we're not in the overlay district. Properties and commercial, so there is a masonry requirement for percentage.
Okay.
It's not a hundred percent. Honestly, I can't tell you off the top of my head what it is.
Whatever the property is, wouldn't it?
Mr. Sanders, would there be any plans to, are you going to do any improvements to your existing building in conjunction with this project? I mean, any updates there or?
The front of it, at the same time, we had the concrete and asphalt poured in the back, we're planning on redoing the front for the drive and everything around there. Building itself, if required, yes, I don't mind. I know paint's coming up in the, in the future. Haven't really decided on, I like the Campbell pattern, the white.
You might check with Steve on that too. But we are, and we are, and the reason I ask that is, I mean, we're trying to, we're trying to step up along the Parkway, along all of our corridor. You know, the metal buildings once, you know, had an application, and yet there's some metal buildings that have gone up recently that have been done very well. There's one right down here down the street that just, it's really a metal building, but it's got a little brick of sod on it. It scorched, you know, and it looks awesome. So that's why I asked.
Yes, I'm opposed to that. Yes, I know that would actually make it look.
As far as cohesive with, with the, you know, with the storage. Thank you, sir.
Any questions for that? Thank you, sir. Anyone else here wishing to speak to this agenda item? There being another public hearings closed, discussion with council?
Proof for approval?
Second.
That motion, Councilman Banks, that council member, God, all in favor by saying aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries. Mr. Sanders, thanks for your investment in Denison.
Thank you.
Hope for your success.
Thank you, sir.
Stephen's your guy, he'll help you. Agenda item 4A, received report, hold discussion, take action on, does the, the next minimum property standards focus area for 2018? Mr. Lay.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Robert Lay, code enforcement manager here with the City of Denison. What I'd like to do is give you a little code enforcement update, some of the things we're working on, some of our initiatives, and then talk about minimum property standards focus area for 2018. Okay, so typically in a year, we have a four-year average for code enforcement numbers. Code enforcement's been averaging about forty-seven hundred cases a year over the past four years, and then about sixteen thousand inspections and been averaging about a hundred and two citations written in a year. So our year-to-date totals as of today, about thirteen hundred and fifty-nine cases total that we've worked, we've taken about two hundred and three complaints so far for the year. About twenty-eight hundred inspections, and we've already written seventy court summons for the year.
And this fiscal year numbers, correct?
Yes, fiscal year numbers. So code enforcement typically ramps up as the, as the weather warms up. So those numbers grow a ton in the last six years. So when, especially when weeds start growing, that's historically been our biggest case that we worked, so.
All right.
So code enforcement, what we're working on, some of our initiatives that we have going on currently is we want to clean our main thoroughfares up. We've identified main thoroughfares in town, listed a few there. There are some others that we're working. We've also identified areas around schools that we would desire to get cleaned up. And I'm thinking among that is, you know, those areas are citizens traveling daily. If we have guests in our town, that's where they're going to travel. If we have a new business owner, that's where they're going to see. We definitely want to put our best foot forward, so we've devoted some extra time and resources to our main thoroughfares. Also, we're going to get more into minimum property standards, but our town right now has broke up into three sections. We have three code enforcement officers that are out daily patrolling these areas. And I've assigned to each one of them, one of the thoroughfares to work individually. It's not necessarily our focus area for minimum property standards, but we think that those targeted areas are important to see those violations brought up to code. So the other initiative we have going right now is rental property in Denison is like thirty-eight percent of our housing, so it's a pretty high number. So historically, if there's a code violation at a rental property, we always notify the tenant and the landlord. If that violation does not get evaded by the tenant, and we end up having to write court summons, we historically have only written that to the tenant. Well, to hold property staff or property owners accountable for their property, we'll be issuing court summons to property owners and tenants for rental properties going forward. We've started that now already, and have had a lot of success with doing that. Okay, briefly, our demolition totals for the year now. So I went back all the way to 2010 through 2017 and found we've knocked down three hundred and eighty-one houses, so a pretty big number there. So currently, year-to-date, we have thirteen that we've completed, fourteen that are ready to be completed, and we have thirty-eight others that are in somewhere in the process. We haven't gotten a lot done recently with the weather. I know this is a big month, talking to Public Works, that we're going to see a lot moved out, so. And our 2018 goal is to get to thirty-five, which shouldn't be an issue at all. Okay, minimum property standards, a little overview of that. The council in 2012 did adopt minimum property standards within our city. Minimum property standards addresses the exterior of a structure and the exterior grounds of a property. So you're looking at things like paint, we're siding, broken windows, rotten wood, and just maintenance of a property as far as picking up any kind of rubbish, debris, and that type of thing. We've had a few, council's assigned a few focus areas in the past. Last year, we worked Austin Avenue really hard, had a lot of success on Austin Avenue. Actually, still have a few cases that we're working, working through now on Austin Avenue. So what we're proposing tonight is our next minimum property standards focus area being the downtown area, the historic district, and a little bit of the surrounding area. Talking with management, we thought with the money that's fixing to be invested in that area, this is the right time to take that step down there. So the area, what that looks like is from the 100 block of West Crawford, Chestnut, Main, and Woodard, going west through the 700 blocks of that area. And then on just Main itself, extending that down to the 1,000 block on just Main itself. Code enforcement, we went out and we've identified initially twenty-plus residential properties, forty-plus commercial properties that are in need of immediate minimum property standards. I do expect that number to grow as I go out and do a lot closer, more thorough inspections. I expect that number to grow. That's what we have identified up to now. So our plan of action, how we want to work through this, is I did meet with the Main Street Advisory Board on February 22nd, told them about our plan. They were very excited, gave their support for that. A lot of them said that frankly, they thought it was overdue that we got to downtown. So did get their support there. So what we want to do going forward from here is draft a letter to send to all commercial property owners in that area. The goal of the letter is to give an overview of the minimum property standards area, what the purpose is, what we're trying to accomplish there, and what our goal is for compliance for those properties. So we kind of want to come out and, with a soft approach initially, of course. So the second thing we're going to do, Don and Dow, myself, will be going out to all commercial buildings that need work and paying them a personal visit. We'll walk their property, we'll discuss their violations, discuss what their options are, kind of their timeline, and work through that with those guys. So if you look, you're going to see a lot of the same buildings have, there's common violations throughout downtown, whether it's paint, whether it's rotten wood on the front of a building. Some of the, in the picture to the, on the right there, the side of that building, we have to address the sides too. Can't just focus on the fronts or the backs, but the sides show as well. Onings downtown, there are plenty of onings that we'll have to address. Boarded up windows, the picture on the right there, there's a bunch of boarded up windows. Really, the whole facade of that picture, that building, they need work. This is a great picture of the rear of a building. So the building on the far left there is what we would like to see. Yeah, those windows are boarded up, and in the rear, we're going to say that's okay, but that's a uniform building from the top to the bottom. Those boarded up windows don't stick out. If you look just beside it, that building has boarded up windows, and you see how much worse that looks. So those are things we'll have to address. Then a good example of the building just beside it is, the building looks good in the back, and you can see how they extended it up on the side of their building. That's where we want to get the sides of the buildings that are visible. Signage downtown, there are a lot of signage that either look like this that are dilapidated or signage for businesses that have already moved out. So we want to, we want to get those summons removed. Substandard structures, there's not a lot of this downtown, but this is a good example of a building that needs a roof, that needs wood replaced, the foundation's failed in the back of it. So these people would have the option, you know, you'd think maybe they would fix it up, maybe we demo that building, whatever they would choose. Nuisance violations, these are more common code enforcement violations. This was open storage, there's the tire shop, we want to address that. That's an isolated community. We want to get that to where at the end of their business day, you don't see tires outside. That's the goal with something like that. Junk vehicles downtown, getting those removed from the street or from parking lots. And then just general rubbish that business owners accumulate in the alleys too. So we'll work all those nuisance violations. Residential violations, they're typically going to be about the same thing as you go through downtown, siding, paint, rotten wood, and roofs. Those are the, really the big ones. There's not nearly as much residential downtown as there is commercial, but we'll be working with the residential just as closely.
I wanted to interrupt your flow here, but that's where the question comes. Where are we at on parking in yards? As far as, like, I see that up and down Crawford Street a lot. I see that in, I mean, you know, where you'll have three vehicles parked in the side yard that, no pavement, there's no gravel. Do we have a standing ordinance on that yet or not?
We do have a standing ordinance, so, and that's, that's a unique problem because a lot of those happen after five and before eight.
For sure, for sure.
So we do have a code enforcement officer that patrols on Saturday, and that is one of the things that they really are looking for. We've written a lot of, we've written a lot of court summons over that, so we do have an ordinance that.
Do we have to automate fine, or is it just a summons?
You have to send them a notice first.
Okay.
And our, it makes them have ten days to comply. It is.
See, it seems like we could tighten that up.
Something that we would have.
College Station would give one in fifteen minutes, like, literally. College Station had it figured out, you know.
Sure, yeah. But now, we, so we do have an ordinance and we do enforce it, but it's pretty lenient.
Right, right, right.
Any other questions?
The letter to the commercial property owners, is that word in such a way that they don't think they're actually getting some type of issue with their property? This is more kind of just giving an overview. I see it says overview, so.
So the initial letter that's going to go out is going to kind of be a blanket one that everyone is going to get. It won't address a single building in that letter. Those single buildings will be addressed in our face-to-face visits.
I just want to just ask to make sure real clear that it's not, this is kind of information given to them, it's not their job, or they're on notice.
Right. I was actually going to draft that, have that come from the city manager, so it's, it's just more of a, here's what's coming.
And really, quite frankly, for, for the ninety-five percent of property owners that are going to get it, that's going to be a positive letter.
Right, right.
And the tone of the letter can be positive. It's going to state the purpose and the goals of the program and the projected timelines of, I mean, yeah, definitely needs to come through.
Yeah, and it'll, it'll list some of the resources that are available too. I mean, we're not just, we're not just telling people, here's what you have to do, but we've got, we have money budgeted for minimum property standards assistance, we have CDBG funds, we have facade grants that PDA offers too, so there's some resources out there available as well.
Other questions?
Thank you, Robert.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Does council need to officially adopt?
I think we have done that in the past, just a, just a simple motion, designating that as our focus area for the year.
Intend a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we accept the plan and the focus area for code enforcement going forward.
That's presented. That motion for councilman Spiegel, second, councilman Mount, are all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries, agenda item 4B, received report, hold discussion, take action on getting an update on a property of owner on unsafe condition. Everyone posted at 2301 South Austin Avenue. Ms. Boy.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight, we are here to discuss 2301 South Austin, which is tabled from the February 5th meeting. Ms. Ozarabi was given thirty days to put a plan together for the renovation of this building. On February the 8th, I called her and requested a meeting to go over what we would be done with this building. And she said she was going to have Mr. Roxory call me, which he did not. On the 26th of February, he dropped off a permit application with insufficient information on it. And then he came in on March 1st and spoke to me a little bit about what he wanted to do to the building. At this point, we don't have anything. The permit application that was turned in was not processed. We haven't accepted it. I do believe that Ms. Ozarabi and Mr. Roxory are here to discuss this.
Okay. Thank you, Betty. I know Mayor Broton ran the last meeting when this was tabled. Do you have any, anything to add for the advocates? I know Ms. Ozarabi has asked to speak to this.
You know, we, we had, I felt like we had a good understanding that night of what was going to be expected. I mean, I, for everybody that was in attendance that night, we had a, we laid it out. We were already well beyond, if you look back at the timeline, I know we're not getting into all of that here, but we did on the last agenda that this was addressed. And in my understanding, the, this project, I'm going to call it a project even though nothing has happened with it, has been ongoing since 2015? Yeah, 2015. It's changed hands since then, but it has been a continual for the past three years in a minimum property standard or in a code violation situation since then. So I feel like we spelled it out. We gave adequate time to make the plan. I thought we all had an understanding, so I'm kind of disappointed where, where we are right now.
Ms. Ozarabi? Name an address, please, for the record.
I'm at St. Anthony's, 5641 St. Thomas, 7509. First of all, I'm going to start by saying she thought, said that she had called me in February to talk to me and discuss, and that's not true. I was set that day, she called and she said she wanted to talk to Mr. Mar. She did not ask me to talk to her, okay? And I told her absolutely I would, I would give her the message. He called her and he applied for a permit. The permit was to clean up the building, make it from inside. From outside, if you look at all the pictures, you would not find even a hole. Even when somebody took the picture, I don't know how they maybe broke in, to get in, because it was all boarded, it was all cleaned, there was no debris outside, there was no holes in the outside. The boarding was also painted, and everything was clean. We did not hear any complaints about it, none whatsoever. I bought it a year ago. She said, and last meeting, probably you have the minutes for it, she said that she had told Mr. Jahan Bita, the old owner, that about a violation, he told her at that time, he never ever had anything saying that he needs to do anything with it. When he found out that somebody broke in, and he also elaborated over it, he said he had fixed the building before he had sold it. To me, he had fixed it numerous times. He had it actually occupied. He had bought an AC unit twice, seven thousand dollars, that the city had no police department, that people have took their time to do all this damage to the building.
So let me, let me, let me interrupt you for one second. And if that becomes relevant, then please continue the talk. So whether what you're saying did or did not happen, what has been done in the last thirty days when you led this council to change?
Okay, well, he came in, my husband did, came in to Betty, and he talked to her, and he applied for a permit, saying that we want fix, like, if there's anything in the roof that need to be leaking, we will fix it. That board that somebody replaced behind, in the back door, and it was covered in the door, so the door's still there, but the board was behind the door just to make sure nobody, it's not easy for anybody to walk in. He replaced that one. He applied for a permit. We said, we will clean it, and if there's any roof leak or anything, we will fix it, okay? And we will make sure that it's clean, so whenever the tenant come in, and he want to rent a space, he can finish it to his likeness, okay? So obviously, we want to make sure that there's nothing hazardous for anybody. First of all, we want to make sure nobody walk into the building. And once we get the permit, we will clean it enough that we will make it ready for a new tenant. If they come in and they want to do a daycare, then they will get a permit and finish it according to a daycare. If they want to do aggressive stuff, then they will do the same thing, whatever the city allow them to do, okay? But we're not going to finish that and leave it vacant, and then the same thing happen again. It doesn't do either one good, okay? But then, that, that permit was declined, and they want us, I think, my assumption, and that's only an assumption, maybe they want us to finish it, however, we want it to, but we want to leave it more like, you know how when you get a new construction for a new shopping center, you leave it and you give allowance for the tenant, new tenant, to finish it how they want it. And that's what we want it to do.
But, Mayor, if you don't mind if I jump in, the, my only concern is when we left here, we could have accomplished this with the typical ten-day full permit approach that we discussed. And we don't, we didn't, we're going to do that, and we said we'd do a special condition because of the fact it was a commercial project. But when we left here, we were talking about a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollar project with a detailed plan in the next thirty days to be provided. Am I incorrect in that? I mean, that's what, that's what we, that was understanding that we all departed apart.
Name an address.
5641 St. Thomas Drive, 750.
So that's my only frustration is that I'm sitting here going, this three thousand dollar, you know, I'm going to clean it up. It's not.
But when we talked about last month when we're here, our understanding is the permit to gut the building out, to clean it all out, not to go ahead and remodel it and spend, I told you I don't have that money, to go ahead and refinish that building. And that's going to take us a long time. So when I talked to Betty, she said, give us a program, how are you going to do this?
Right.
Tell it down, not a plan. I can't go to an architect and spend fifteen thousand dollars for a plan. I don't know how we're going to do it yet. You know, I've been talking to a few of these people, but still, I mean, for the building, for the type of use, for what we're going to do with it, it's not very clear yet. And this call came all of a sudden, I mean, the demolition list came to us like a week before the court, before the hearing.
This is like fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand square foot building. So therefore, it's not even, it's not like a white tenant thing. It depends on what we want it to, and to make it successful and to avoid even having somebody in the future to break in, because it's, again, it doesn't do either one good. It doesn't make us look good, that our police department not even aware when somebody come in and steal the whole thing and demolish it, you know.
But remember, we covered that last time. I mean, there's no security to the building, so I don't have any expectation that our police officers respond based on no knowledge.
I'm sure, I just heard that, that person who was interrupting the code enforcement saying that you're actually withdrawing three areas now, you are more proactive, you are more.
But not, not from police, not from security, that's for code enforcement. That's minimum property. And they're, they're going to be all over this again, but, but my point is that I would appreciate if you would not throw our police officers, I mean, don't, don't try to throw them under the bus. It's not their responsibility to secure your building. If, if you contact them and there's something actively going on, they will respond appropriately. But I, we, there's no duty of theirs to protect your building short of notification.
I'm not saying.
Make sure we're all on the same page.
No, 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 I'm not just saying it is their duty, absolutely not. It is part of their duty, it's part of my duty, it's part of your duty because you have a work here, anything, it's like, it's real system, we are all together, work together.
Let me say something. When we bought this building, it was under demolition list before us, with the.
See, this one, that's our.
Okay, now, you took it off the demolition list for him to board it up and close it and make it secure.
Yes.
And when we bought it from him, we were under the impression that it is secured right now for us, to have enough time for us to go back and fix this building. right now for us to have enough time for us to go back and fix this building, not to come in now and force us to get that.
And you told us to paint the, the wall, and we did, to make it look like decent from outside to.
When did that occur? Where did that come to the council?
That's from.
It didn't, it never made it happen first time.
We didn't talk about it, but we did that initially. When we bought it, they say, okay, it was boarded, just painted the same wall, so it will not look like really bad. Not that anybody can walk in, because it was like screwed in.
I mean, of course, you can look at it, it's very secure. It's very tight. It's like when they went in, it seems like somebody took that board out and walked in to take those pictures.
And you can see, it's a very limited, small.
And when I went to get the permit, I told her I would clean it all out, probably the number, I would, well, it's not sufficient. But still, to get it all, get it out, clean it, I told her even I'll fix the windows, the broken windows in the front as well. So that make it looks a little bit appealing than it is now, and at least there's nothing inside of it. But for me to go ahead and reconstruct it from the ground up, it's not, it's not feasible for us now.
It's $15,000 square foot. The plan is first of all, just to get it decent enough. So if a future tenant were to come in and they will now get a permit to do like, maybe like a, a restore or a grocery store or a daycare, whatever it is, then they can finish it up. We made them basic purpose as a commercial court they do. And then they can finish it, occupy it. So this way, it's not even left again.
How, how long have you all owned the property?
Only a year.
One year.
One year, okay.
And this is the first time we hear from it.
Right. So Ms. Boyd, can you remind the council of the, of the unsafe and nuisance violations? Did you bring that with you tonight?
Um, I have it in file. I know that when this originally started, the building was open, which made it an attractive nuisance and automatically an unsafe structure when it's open.
When was that?
Uh, when it was initially posted in December 17.
Okay.
What is it, the, the, what you mean, the demolition note?
No, it was not open. It was, it was closed and boarded.
Well, I'm not gonna argue with you about whether or not it was open or not. That's what this says.
I just want to hear from the chief building official what your testimony is related to the structural.
And it was not weather tied and the roof. So we've already discussed that the roof has holes in it where the air conditioning units, I guess, were stolen, so.
And I told you all that.
So anyway, but that, that is, was the problem, part of the problem. So it was not weather tied. It was open, which, like I said, automatically makes it unsafe, because then people can come in there, vagrants, kids, whatever. And, and then the roof was in bad shape. So that is how this building got posted to begin with.
Okay. Wait, the roof, I did not get in the roof before, so it's not easy for me to see. I'm taking her word for it. Mr. John Baker said that they actually ripped up that, that air conditioning that happened. We had, we were not aware of it. She brought it to our attention the last time, and we will fix that. That's absolutely, you know, it is, it's called for. It's supposed to happen. From in, the front, all of it, this picture, it was from before. You can see there is no way for anybody to walk in. In the back, there is a door, and that door was also boarded. That door, somebody ripped that board and opened the door. And the door was still closed, but then the board was not there, and we went ahead and secured that. So no kids can walk in from any door anywhere. So it's all tight. The only thing that is in the ceiling, that it need to be fixed. So we're gonna have to fix the ceiling, but to be able to do that, we need to do the permit. So we can walk in, and we're not doing a violation without you guys saying, you're working without a permit. That's not right. So we have to get first the permit, then we can walk in, and we do what we need to do, to clean it up and bring it where it's safe, not create any nasty and so on, I mean, hazard for anybody. And this is a steel building, so it's really a solid building. It's not easy for somebody to break it or anything like that. But once, once we get the permit, we be able to clean it for all from inside, okay? And then probably you're gonna have to see that. And then fix the ceiling, of course, but it's, it's burdened for us too, not just because of the code of the people or intake, because if you have water leaking in, it's gonna be more, more damaged. And I really wish that I knew ahead of time, or I knew that somebody would have told me that the ceiling, that there is a hole in the ceiling before this happened, you know? But once I knew about it, I couldn't touch it, because otherwise I'd be working without a permit.
That's where I think we're, we're kind of going back around, is that we knew we had water infiltrating into the building. We had those units gone. And that's what we were hoping, that you were gonna spend this last period of time, was trying to research what it would be to fix the ceiling, fix the leak and evade that, and then kind of that, secure it up more on that part of it. And we come back, and I guess three or four days ago, he approaches the city staff, and then at this late hour to, to do $3,000 worth of cleanup. That's what we got. At least for me personally, I'm kind of disappointed that you weren't able to get this other thing to down straight and about this roof.
I think the, the last, the last meeting, what we talked about me trying to get it all, all fixed up completely and doing it off, which we said it's gonna be lots of hundreds of thousands of dollars. But then when I talked to my architect and everything, one of them, he proposed to me, let's say, you know, I'm, instead of you doing it off, and then you're really gonna configure it how you want. And if you get somebody who wanted a daycare, it cannot configure it that way because you owe to spend the money there, why don't you just make it like a shelf? And then have somebody clean it up enough so if somebody rent it, they can finish it to their likeness and give them allowance.
But, but let me remind you, because this is, this is where I'm disconnecting. Because we talked extensively in how we came up with those kind of numbers, was because once a property hits the demolition list, it has either got to come back to minimum property standards or it's got to go away. So there's not, there's not a, we can't all of a sudden today say, oh, we're just gonna go ahead and get it back to kind of a shell status, because it still requires you to bring electrical to code. It would require replacement of those HVAC units, because it's not inhabitable right now. You would have to replace the roof in order to meet the compliance based on the chief building official. So, so all those things, that's what we talked about in here. And we said, if you'll spell out, we're willing to give you more time than, than a typical residential demo, if you'll spell out for us in a detailed plan, not architectural drawings, because you said you couldn't get those done in 30 days, just a detailed written plan of everything we're gonna do to bring this property back to minimum property standards, then we can consider a six or a nine or a 12-month timeframe to let you do the work.
Yeah.
But the pro, we have a disconnect if we're gonna talk about a $3,000 cleanup, because it tells me 30 days from now, that building's not gonna look much different than it does today. It's still gonna be wet inside, and I can still go walk in the back door if I want to.
No, the back door is.
But if it's real, I can walk in. Sure. But I mean, but that's the problem. It's not a secure building, and we're not talking about the same thing.
That's what I came in to talk to you about, to get the permit, to gut the whole building out, like.
And I want to remind you that if you come in with a, with a $50,000 plan, but a $3,000 plan tells me it's not looking.
The number does not make any sense. Okay, let's put it this way. The dumpster rental from you guys is $900.
That's my.
So that's, it's not even close.
And you're gonna need more than one.
Okay. So the idea is just to get the permit for a cleanup, okay, like the city of hers for it. I could get a cleanup permit for a property like this and just get it all out. That's what I came and asked her for. And she said, no, I will not take this permit.
Because there was like, I'm just gonna like you said, okay. And I do understand. This could be like phase one, phase two, phase three of a plan like this. So this one, for me, it, first, secure it. Second, fix the roof, so nobody can get in and no more damage and can happen. Then we clean it up. The cleaning up will be just to fix everything and, and not have any kind of hazard. And then, plan three will be, if I have like a prospect for the building, then the electricity and the plumbing, all that, because that's also relevant to what kind of business gonna be there.
But that, that's the disconnect. And unfortunately, it's gotten to this point. And Mayor, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I have a hard time saying, okay, we're gonna wait for you to get a prospect, because that could be five years from now. The fact is, it's gotta, go ahead. I apologize, Jason.
No, I don't hear a plan. And we went away from here a month ago with you presenting a plan. And all I hear tonight is cleanup. To me, that's not a plan. You're talking about cleanup, but we were talking about steps. This is what we're gonna do. This is the plan, and it's gonna cost, it's gonna take us six months to do it. And we were all in agreement to let you have 30 days. Well, you took more than 25 of them before you ever approached the city again. That's where I'm having the same disconnect that Councilman Spiegel's having. We know, we went away with an agreement.
Okay.
That you were going to present a plan, and this is not the plan that I thought we would.
Okay. Now, there is two different things with you. Okay. You telling me a plan, she telling me what you're gonna do for the next 40 years, okay? I said, I can't get you a plan within 30 days. I can get you what I'm gonna do with this building in the next year.
But that's not what we agreed to 30 days ago.
No, no. What did we agree to?
We agreed to you presenting a plan to the staff of what was gonna happen to that building to make it safe. And that's not what I'm hearing.
I'm telling you, I'm making it, I'm making it safe. I'm getting it all out. I'm fixing the roof. I'm changing the broken windows. I'm securing the doors. Isn't that a plan?
That's the same. I mean, nobody can walk into the building. I mean, I gave you, if you don't have a permit, you will not be able to walk in.
I can go and spend that money and remodel the whole building, like spending on the
I mean, it's not gonna be over in the business in six hours, in six months. But, okay, what is it the plan you wanted? Let me see if I can do your thing. Tell me what is it exactly you want me to do? And I will definitely, we can work both way. I mean, tell me what is it that you would like?
In my understanding, and again, I appreciate, I wasn't here, I appreciate the Pro Tem for doing the meeting. I, I think it was that you had 30 days to come up with a plan to bring the property back to minimum property standard.
No, that's not what it was. Last time when we talked, it was 30 days to get a basic plan, because we told them we cannot get an architect a plan and everything. This is a basic idea. So we told them, okay, this is what we wanna do. And sometimes like, you know, if you say this is not gonna work, you say, okay, this is not what's gonna work. I mean, at least that much. So you can lay out how much is the minimum you would require. So you want it to be safe, it is safe. You want it, the roof to be fixed, we can fix that. That's not a problem. Now, to think inside, you have to clean first before you know what to do. And electric, we don't even know how is the electric, because we only have this much of a picture. So once we clean it up, we know exactly what is the, the layout and what is really we dealing with.
See, all of that is, all of the, all of that is, is contingent upon you getting a tenant.
No.
And what the community, the community needs is a property that makes minimum property standard.
That's not what I said.
Okay. The property to make minimum standard, it need the roof not to be breached, right? Not the broken windows, correct? And it's a safe where if somebody walk in, it wouldn't get hurt, correct?
No, there's, there's more.
What's more? What is more?
Well, first of all, first of all, this is what was talked about on February 5th that, that maybe you're not understanding. You were asked to, to bring us a plan. We've talked about you're not gonna do an architect plan right now. You've talked to one, but you're not gonna do it right now.
Yes.
But your plan for what you were gonna do to renovate this building and, and the steps along how you were gonna do it. Now, that is not what we have.
Okay.
But that is what you were supposed to bring in.
When I came to you, the, the office, what did you tell me?
Just the other day, bring me a plan.
You tell me you wanted a full plan.
No, 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 I didn't. I said, I want to, I need a plan, what your plan is. We have no idea what your plan is.
So is, is you all have anything new to offer on the topic?
Like I said, we can gut the building out, fix the roof, fix the broken window.
I mean, we have two, two plans. We have the short term and the long term. And I know you concerned that maybe in five days, we will not have it. And if that's not gonna happen, that's not, I mean, it doesn't give me any to pay taxes and be, payment mortgage, payment when actually I'm having it closed. And that's not the idea. Okay, so we have a short term and long term. The short term, first of all, we're gonna clean it up. We wanna know what we did and what. We will fix the roof and we, and it's sorry to secure from all other, okay? So we will make sure at least those one is done. This is will be the short period, okay? And then we have a, gonna have a long, a longer period. And that one maybe would be at least, I would say, a year. And that would be to cut it, make like electric, make.
Yeah, we, we're hearing aloud in there, there's a lot of potential possibilities, timelines that aren't set, that you really just don't know yet to talk here. So anything new to offer that you haven't already said?
I have a discussion?
No, like, like what she said.
Okay. Discussion, Council.
Mr. Mayor, I wasn't here in the last, the meeting where this was heard, but this property has been an eyesore on one of the corridors of our, our city for a long time. And it certainly has fallen in much more disarray over the last year. I, the city manager will tell you that I've called him a couple of times about this property, because it's, it's just, it, it is, it is unsafe and it, and it's, and it's not what we want in our city.
Well, you know, Mayor, I'll second that, Janice. The, the real challenge is no different than we, and you specifically, give every person fair warning when they enter this process of, I want you to fully understand what's gonna be required to bring this property up. Because we're not gonna go six months down the road, even if you pull a permit, you meet those, whether it's residential, commercial, that you need to have a full understanding of what it, what it means to really be a minimum property standard. Once it gets to this point, we discuss that that time. It's, it's much more than just fixing leaks and, and unsecured buildings. So that's my, that's my disconnect here tonight. And my frustration is that I feel like we spent a lot of the public's time and the council's time discussing all that, but no action was taken. And now we're expected to do it again. And that's where I'm frustrated.
Well, I think that's what we do on the normal with the 10 days and the six months. And we make it very clear.
Right.
You know, these are expectations. Get with the building official quickly. Know what you need to do before you spend any money, because we will come back and, and do the citizens' work of cleaning the community up. So that's, that's important. Any other discussion? Is there a motion?
I was just gonna add to what Mayor Pro Tem Spiegel said, because that's, in the minutes from that meeting, it was recorded that Mayor Pro Tem Spiegel asked Ms. Alzarabi if she had an estimated scope of investment that she's willing to make to bring it back up to code. Because the question came up, do you know what it's gonna take? And Ms. Alzarabi stated that she thought it would take about $500,000. I do remember that come up.
Mr. Ross wanted to add that.
Why, you should, I'm not, you said that, by the way, but not me. But also, that's the long term. But for right now, we're gonna have to deal with one thing at a time. So the most important thing first to get it where it's not, it's safe for you. I mean, I seen last time you were not here. And last time, I seen things that were six months and one year, being given another, not, giving another six month permit. I've seen it. And you were, if you look at that building, there was, one of them was residential and commercial now, and it was like bare 75%. They give him, he had a permit for one year, and they give him another six months. And another one, there was another guy that I don't know what happened to his building.
We were talking about the property on Austin Avenue.
I understand. I'm saying my way there.
You were asked to bring a plan that we've gotten Ms.
And we talked to the plan, but she didn't like the plan, so we coming back again to talk about the plan.
Is there anything new that you have to offer tonight that hasn't been said?
Yeah. I feel like you should give me what is it, approach it differently. Tell me what is it, yeah, you need for me to do, in what time period, to make it to your likeness? And I will do that.
Right. I think that was accomplished 30 days ago.
No.
And you didn't do that.
No, I did that. They told me to just go and get a plan. I get a plan. You didn't like the plan, so we coming back again. It was not a detailed plan that they asked us to give. However, they told us, what is your intention to do? Come in and tell us. That doesn't need to do, that doesn't need to be detailed engineered architect. And we did exactly that.
We understand. We understand your position. Do you have anything new to offer that hasn't already been said?
I will fix it and I will make sure that no problems.
Thank you. Motion, Council.
I'm going to decide the short term, 2301 South Austin, nuisance and unsafe, to hold a demolition, to authorize staff to proceed with the demolition process.
Second.
That motion from Councilman Doughty, saying, Councilman McGough, if everybody's saying aye?
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Council now go into executive session. We should check for 551, Texas Governor's Code, 55 pending litigation on 17th team of seers. The time is 6:50 in the executive session.